This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, June 11th. Please stand for an invocation led by Councilwoman Richardson, Councilmember from District One, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh God, I have been ages past our hope in years to come. I shelter from this stormy blast in our eternal home. Once again, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit coming before you, thinking you've fallen in blessings that you bestowed on us. We thank you for allowing us to come here today and transact your business, and we pray that whatever we say and do, you may get glory and honor. Get us all to forgive us and keep us and cause your faith to shine among us. In the matchless name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Just before we would sit down, I'd ask that we would observe a moment of silence in honor of two very prominent longtime Mobileans. One in the person of Frederick Marshall, longtime principal of John L. LaFlore High School, educator, assistant superintendent, you name it, he was associated with it, made this community so much better. I was sad to hear of his passing. And also, Maesvillean, Ms. Cora Battles, longtime member of Revelation Missionary Baptist Church, very prominent in the Sunlight District Association and its Women's Auxiliary, just a mother, first person I adopted as mine, adoptive grandmother, just a great lady. And we'd ask that we would observe a moment of silence in memory of their lives and legacies.
Roll call Vice President Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
We first like to ask that everyone would silence all of your electronic devices upon entering the council meeting. Anyone that would like to address the council on a non-agenda item is asked to contact the clerk's office on the Thursday preceding the Tuesday, and we would like to speak before 2:00. We ask that all of your commentary be pertinent to City of Mobile business. Upon coming here to the podium, we would ask that you clearly state for the record both your name and your address. Each speaker is granted five minutes in which to make their presentation. At the end of the fourth minute, you'll hear the ringing of a bell. That shows you that you have 60 seconds, essentially a minute, to conclude all of your speech. We ask that there be no undue applause, no public outcry when addressing the council. We ask that all statements be made to myself, who serves this chair, and if there are any councilpersons who wish to respond, they'll have that ability. Now, ladies and gentlemen, those are essentially the rules of this particular meeting, and we thank you for your interest in your municipal government.
Approval of dates of May 21st and May 28th.
Still move?
Second. It's been probably moved to second in a discussion. Not all favor. I oppose.
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see everybody this morning. Something special must be going on because Honorable Connie Hudson is amongst us this morning. Good to see you, Commissioner. Last week, we had opportunity to travel to Louisville, Kentucky, Councilor Richardson and Councilor John Williams, along with George Talbot and Paul West, and David Clark. And we went specifically to look at a venue, an entertainment venue, that was created by Cordish and Company for Louisville. It's called Fourth Street Live. And the reason for our visit is that Cordish is one of the two finalists in the competition for what will happen at the Civic Center site. And so it's very interesting to see what they had done, and it certainly, after you see it and you see the proposal, which will be forthcoming to the public for you to see after City Council sees all of it, then the idea was, is that, you know, seeing it on the ground, visualizing it in the city of Mobile, that maybe this is a pathway forward for us. But the steps to reach that will be the CBRE, the company, the consultant that's helping us with this, will come down and make a long presentation to the City Council so that they fully understand the options that the city presently has. Then they will meet again with the committee that's been helping vet this entire project. After that, the City Council will have an opportunity to down-select who will be the developer for the Civic Center site, and that really could happen sometime over the next six weeks to, six to eight weeks, depending on questions that may arise in the interim. Anyway, very, very interesting and very fruitful trip. Also, as a recap to the legislation that passed in the state legislature in this most recent sessions, were a couple of bills that will have an impact on crime. There were a couple that we were really fighting to get passed, but we were unsuccessful. But of them was promoted by Adeline Clark, and it's HB 288, and it requires hospitals and healthcare facilities to report non-accidental gunshot wounds or stabbing wounds to the police. And the reason is, is that there are a lot of people that, you know, that don't want to tell that they maybe were shot in a violent way or retaliation to something, but it will give us an opportunity to track who's being shot, the hope of eventually determining who has been shooting them. Anyways, a big step to help us gather additional information. Another one was HB 375. It was sponsored by Representative Matt Simpson, and it will make possession of a stolen gun a Class C felony. And it passed with bipartisan support. If you recall, we had Rashawn Tudor, who was killed by a person using a stolen gun. Great work by the Mobile Police Department. Director Barber was in Montgomery on several occasions trying to convince the entire, just our delegation, but the entire House and the Senate, that this was a very needed bill. So thanks to Director Barber and to our city staff to help draft the legislation. But also, I want to thank the City Council for unanimously supporting a resolution in support of the legislation. So that certainly had an impact on the delegation, who needs to be thanked for doing this. We believe it's a game changer, and we're working with Governor Ivey to schedule a public or ceremonial signing of the bill. Now, a couple of other things I'd like to deflect just for a moment to Director Barber, but stolen handguns are down 40% this year. And, you know, that is something that I think it's a combination of a couple of things. It's not because of this recent legislation. One has to do with the public service announcements that we've been airing on a frequent basis. It's had an impact, people being responsible about leaving their guns in their cars. And there's one other thing I'd like Director Barber just to touch on, and that would be gun court.
Thank you, Mayor. The gun court is actually handled in municipal court, so it is the municipal court system. And what we're dealing with is illegal gun carry. Those subjects that are involved in illegal gun carry within our community are then transferred into the gun court, and we are giving them time for doing that, depending on their record and the circumstances of their arrest. It has increased somewhat the jail population, and we're rather proud of that because what we are trying to do is stop these individuals before the trigger is pulled, rather than wait until somebody is either seriously injured or killed because of somebody illegally carrying a gun. Credit goes to Judge Graddock, as well as the criminal chief, Jennifer Sussman, for coming up with the gun docket, and what we're making it is very uncomfortable for anybody to illegally carry a gun in the city of Mobile.
By understanding, if you stop and think about it and you just dream up, how many gun cases do you think would be on that docket today? And I know it's over 125. You wouldn't think that there would be that many, you know, citations issued or that many people on the docket, but there are a lot of people illegally carrying guns, and we're going to have consequences for that, and we think part of that is the gun court. On another note, the Parks and Recreation announcement that our community centers and parks are now open for summer, pools and splash pads, except for the one at Melavanna Park. I'm teasing. Just wanted to see if I could get a rise out of Councilor Rich. But the splash pads everywhere in the city are working, and my understanding, the one at Melavanna Park is hugely successful, of which we're grateful that it's turned out to be such a good success. Anybody that has access to information about the schedule of what parks open and what things that are available to do there can look on the recreation page, city recreation page on Facebook. Any questions? That's it. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask Director Barber, I appreciate the efforts with the gun controls and everything, but a couple of questions, and what do you, how do you identify, or what is your definition of illegal gun carrying? I know what it is, but what is the actual definition, you know, to look at it as illegal gun carrying? And also, and how are these citizens that's carrying illegal guns, how are they being caught?
Well, illegal gun carry means carrying a concealed weapon that's without a permit could be an illegal gun carry. Carrying certainly a stolen weapon, which is now a felony, which would be transferred to state court, but has been previously handled within our municipal court system in the gun court docket. There are other certain persons that are forbidden to carry a firearm, such as juveniles, and so that is an illegal gun carry as well. They are being identified through intelligence-led policing. We specifically look for who is involved in illegal gun carries, as well as the locations where we're having violent or shooting offenses. It's a concentrated effort by the police department geographically, as well as offender-oriented.
So these certain individuals, are they just being pinpointed, or, I mean, you all just definitely have an idea who they are, or they being random search?
I mean... No, it's very much offender-oriented, and, you know, the amazing thing with a lot of these young people carrying guns is they don't mind showing these weapons on social media, and so we are very much offender-oriented. We certainly look for any gang affiliation with the illegal gun carry. And let me bring up another really important point. It was a matter of time before I think this was going to happen. I've been saying it for many, many months now. We just had the recent homicide that we just began to work. That is a gun trafficker that's breaking into cars, and they're trafficking these weapons into the streets of Mobile, as well as outside of the city. But they're also occurring recently. Over in Baldwin County, these stolen weapons are showing up in our crime scenes in Mobile. That young man got up to go to work and was shot and killed by gun traffickers that were rifling through his wife's car. And so, a very serious problem in our community, in all of our cities, it's not unique to Mobile. The Birmingham police officer that was killed this year was also killed by gun traffickers that were rifling through cars looking for stolen guns. And so I'm very pleased to see the drop in the number of guns that are hitting the streets because we do have legal owners of guns now being a lot more sensitive and responsible about securing those weapons, but also taking punitive action on those responsible for trafficking these weapons and carrying these weapons. Because I can assure you of this, you get somebody carrying a stolen high-capacity nine millimeter, it's just a matter of time before they use that weapon, and so we're trying to intervene before that trigger is pulled.
Yeah, I appreciate your great efforts, and this is something that I've really been advocating for, for, for a while, and I do appreciate, you know, with the courts and a crackdown of this. But just, you know, even last night or this morning, I got a text message from one of the news stations talking about was a shooting on Baltimore Street. You know, whatever we need to do as a city, we need to do, because again, you know, it's still spring, you know, officially it's still spring, you feel summer, but summer has not hit yet, and I feel like if we break down or do something, it's just going to get worse. And, you know, and I hate to say it, but it's not just the east side of Mobile, I mean, it's now, it's now in the west side of Mobile, and it's a bad statement on our city, you know, in general. So whatever we need to do as a city, we need to go ahead and do it. And again, I do appreciate your great work.
Let me also join with the mayor and thank all of you on City Council for unanimously supporting the resolution, some of the efforts we're making in Montgomery. We will be back to you before the next session to ask for your support again on being able to hold violent recidivist offenders for trial, rather than return them back to the street only to see them shoot again. And so we will back to Montgomery. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rich.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to give Councilman CJ Small credit for what we see now is happening in the state legislature regarding handguns. Councilman Small came to us with a recommendation that any person who failed to secure their gun and their gun stolen and was used to commit a crime, that you go back and also punish the person who failed to secure the gun. And he proposed that we send that to Montgomery for the state legislature to act on. The chief got involved in that, and what came out of that was that if a crime is committed with a stolen gun, then the person who used that gun to commit a crime would get, would be criminally prosecuted. But at least we got something out of it. But it first came to this council from Councilman Small, finally get stolen handguns off the street and out of the hands of violent offenders, and looked like we went a different route, but we, we gonna get there. But had he not started down that road, we probably wouldn't have been near this far down the road.
Thank you, Councilman Small. Let's give Councilman Small a big round of applause.
It's the help of the ladies and the administration, and also of our council attorney, one of the cochrane. And it wasn't for all three of us working together, it won't be where we at today. It's going to take all three of us to, all three of us, to move our city forth, to make our city better. You know, our mayor, you know, campaigned on having the safest friendly city by 2020, and we almost less than six months away from 2020, and I just don't see it. It's just going to take all of us to work together to make our city the safest friendly city, where we can welcome all types of visitors to our city, because our city is a jewel, is a treasure, and we plenty things here to offer. And it's my goal to work along the administration to make our city very safe and friendly. Thank you.
Well, in the spirit of making our city a better place to live, I want to recognize three community groups today. They are here from District Seven, and they have participated in the Love Your Community campaign. I think you all are familiar with what that is. It was spearheaded by County Commissioner Connie Hudson, who was here in the audience with us today, working in conjunction with Keep Mobile Beautiful, and Phyllis Winger is as well, from Keep Mobile Beautiful. It was a program that provided incentive for neighborhood groups, churches, and community centers to go out and do cleanups and compete against each other for prize money. You know, the groups that are here today from my district do cleanups anyway. That is part of who they are and what they do as a community. But when Commissioner Hudson and Keep Mobile Beautiful came together to provide this program, they had even more incentive because it was a challenge for prize money. So they got together and started some weekly and bi-weekly cleanups to make sure that they came out on top in this competition. And we have exciting announcement coming up just in a few minutes. So here today from District Seven are the Alpine Hills Community Action Group, the Eradicators.
All right now. All right.
The Hillsdale Heights Neighborhood Association. And the Athie Road Community Action Group. I'm just so excited to be here today to recognize for what they do, because as you all know, community groups are so vitally important to helping us take care of our neighborhoods and our citizens. They are truly the eyes and ears of our neighborhoods. They call me, as I know that their leaders call you and your neighborhoods, to help them do what sometimes the city cannot do, but also to make sure that we are doing what we need to do. And I hear from all of these folks on a consistent basis, believing me, they've got my number on speed dial, and I've got theirs as well, so we work together to make our neighborhoods a better place to live. So I'm going to ask her Hudson, if she will join me, and we're going to start with the Athie Road Community Action Group. So guys, if y'all will come down and join us. This is just a certificate of recognition that we wanted to present to the neighborhood groups. This is for the Athie Road Community Action Group for their participation in the 2019 Love Your Community Cleanup Team. In the community category, members of the Community Action Group are to be commended for their dedication and giving so freely of their time in this very worthy cause. So thank you very much. Ronnie? Mark? And other of the Fillers brothers, right? Grandson, okay. You see, everybody gets involved.
In the family.
In the family. So this is your certificate. If y'all want to join in, and we'll get a quick picture here. Everybody. All right, thank you. Next is the Hillsdale Heights Neighborhood Association, Homeowners Association. The Athie Road Group has been known for picking up tires. Y'all have probably seen them in here before, picking up tires. They are known for that. The Hillsdale Heights Homeowners Association has been reformulated recently, and they have gotten off to a very fast start with this cleanup. So again, we want to recognize you all with this certificate of recognition for all you have done, for your efforts in cleaning up, and they have this really cool video online as well. Thank you, Felicia, for heading us up. Bethelene, y'all come on in, let's get a picture. Thank you, Felicia. And last but not least, are the Eradicators. This is the Alpine Hills Community Action Group. I'll let Earl tell you how much trash and litter they picked up because it just kept growing, and I don't think I ever got a final amount out. They have been very consistent in doing cleanups, and since February 1st, they really collected a very impressive amount of litter. So if y'all come down, Earl and Brooke. And y'all probably remember when we had this kickoff, Commissioner Hudson had shirts like these, as well as bags for all the different groups to go out and collect. So Earl is modeling. And again, this is another certificate of recognition for all of the efforts that you all put forth. I mean, I would see you all out collecting litter on the weekends, so thank you so much for all that you have done. Alpine Hills and the Eradicators, it sounds like a band. Thank you, guys. And don't forget, after we finish with this, Commissioner Hudson has an announcement, but after that, we want him to go outside and get a picture of everybody together, okay? Again, I just want to thank all of my groups for their very hard work, and also to thank Commissioner Hudson and Keep Mobile Beautiful for putting this program together. I think it's really a wonderful idea to start getting the word, you know, around the area. And now that we've had this kind of pilot program, I guess, next year we'll have even more groups involved, and I think we'll work out all of the kinks and miscommunication to make sure that everybody understands what all the rules are and what these incentives, you know, truly provide. So Commissioner Hudson, if you even want to take it away.
Well, good morning to the council. Mayor Stimson, ladies and gentlemen, I cannot tell you how proud that I am of these ladies and gentlemen who are here today. I just, this is a wonderful day to be able to acknowledge the program, but also to recognize these individuals that have worked so hard. You as public officials know that, as well as we do on the county side, that litter is an overwhelming problem, and it overwhelms our resources and our teams of people that go out, and so we really do have to have community input to help with this problem. And the Love Your Community program is geared as an ongoing anti-litter cane that directs people to pay attention to the areas that they care most about. That's hence Love Your Community, you know, around their neighborhoods, their churches, the schools. And right now, we have, this is a collaborative effort, as Councilwoman Gregory said, with Keep Mobile Beautiful, but also the Alabama Coastal Heritage Trust. We are all working together. Right now, we have more than 500 participants volunteering on different teams, and this could be one individual, it could be 50 individuals, and it's, whether it's Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, club, school service groups, churches, senior centers, we have a variety of different people who are involved. And what we decided to do to help encourage more people to get involved at the beginning of the year was to have a cleanup challenge. Now, not all the teams that are, that are part of Love Your Community necessarily participated, but we did have a number that did. And the challenge was how much litter could be picked up within a five-month period. It ended the end of May, and we judged that based on pictures and information that was sent to us, and the groups that you see here today are all winners. And then, and we have an additional one that's in Councilwoman Rich's district as well. But the cleanup challenge, the Councilwoman Gregory mentioned earning money as prize money, but this is beautification money. This money is to be spent by these groups for beautification projects in public areas. It could be spent for recycling, resources, or anything like that. So all this money will go to good use to help beautify the community, and we thought that that was a great encouragement. Friendly competition is always a good thing. So in, we had two divisions. We had the community division and the schools division. In the community division, our first place, well, I'll, I'll start with our first-place winner. It was Alpine Hills. They came in number one with the most collected. We had Hillsdale Heights, number two. We had the Mobile Regional, Hudson Mobile Regional Senior Community Center is number three, and we had Athie Road, honorable mention, and all of these will receive funding for beautification. On the, on the school side, we had the Just For Development Group, they are the Crew of Clean, that was their, that was their nickname, and Davidson High School is the second-place winner. So this, you know, this was a, we, this was a model to see, you know, an experiment, I guess you could call it, to see how well that this would work in terms of getting public interest and encouragement, and I think it has worked very well. We worked out a few kinks, and I think we may do this again in the fall and step it up just a bit there. But I encourage each of you, if you have groups in your district, please direct them our way. We'd love to get them involved in the program as well. And I know, Phyllis, did you have, would you like to say a few words?
I'm just really pleased with all the groups that have worked with this, and looking forward to getting some more groups in some of our other districts. And I'm, I'm about to speak to the few groups to get them ready to go and help them get what we need to get.
Put District Three on the scale.
And District One.
Let's meet next week.
We'll do it, we'll do it. Because next time, we want all of you to have groups that competing... that competing for these beautification funds too, okay? So, thank you for your time this morning, and thank you, Councilwoman Gregory, for the acknowledgement today. And thank you, groups.
(applause).
They're going to take pictures.
While they're, sure. While they're going to take the picture, you go from Councilwoman Rich.
I had no presentation, Dave.
Congratulations to all of these great groups.
Can you give me a proclamation real quick?
So, what?
I'll be giving the word to the mayor.
Come on. You want me to call you?
No, actually, I'm standing in for Councilwoman Rich. I produce this proclamation in honor of the Boys and Girls Club of South Alabama. So, if there are representatives out here?
Yeah, Ms. Bacon, Amelia Kate Bacon, I know is here.
And I'm honored to read this on her behalf.
Come on down with Amelia Kate Bacon. Judge Finley. Come on down, Judge Finley. Ms. Bacon, Amelia Kate Bacon, come on down.
Yeah.
From District 2. I know Ms. Bacon. Come on, Judge Finley. Brick, I see you got a brick with it.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay. Whereas, the Boys and Girls Club of South Alabama will spread Boys and Girls Club Week, June 17 through the 21st, 2019, to promote its advocacy for youth via a June 18 telethon on WKRG TV, and an annual Youth of the Year Luncheon on June 20th to showcase the accomplishments of club kids. And whereas, every day, thousands of young people in the Metro Mobile community leave school with nowhere to go and risk being unsupervised, unguided, and unsafe. And whereas, for 62 years, the Boys and Girls Club of South Alabama has provided alternative to this situation by providing positive, safe environments in which kids and teens have fun, participate in life-changing programs, and build supportive relationships with peers and caring adults. And whereas, their mission is, quote, "to enable all young people, especially those who need us most, to realize their full potential as productive, caring, responsible citizens," end quote. And whereas, the six core areas used to implement this mission include career development, the arts, education, health and wellness, character and leadership, and sports and resolution. That results in a priority outcomes of academic success, good character, and citizenship and healthy lifestyles. And whereas, the Boys and Girls Club of South Alabama serves over 4,000 youth annually through registered membership, community outreach, seven-year-round club sites, three summer-only enrichment programs, and Camp Chandler Tonsmire. And now, therefore, I, Bess Rich, standing in for Ms. Grecker, Councilmember of District 7, along with the members of the Mobile City Council and the mayor, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, June 11, 2019, as the Boys and Girls Club of South Alabama Day, in Mobile, and urge all our citizens to join with us during this special week by visiting a local Boys and Girls Club and to learn how to become involved in creating great futures for the young people of our community.
(applause).
I was going to say, we should maybe come up here. Do you think, go with the whole council on this?
Sure.
I agree. It'll take a couple seconds, but if you'll get up.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rich.
While they're coming, we have heard this often, that there's nothing for our youth to do in the city of Mobile. Now that we have some youths here, let me go ahead on and read some of the things that they can do, that we contribute towards. Child Advocate Center, Mobile Education Foundation, Mobile Department, Explorers, Dumas Western Center, Mobile Police Youth Academy, Mobile Orchestra, Center for the Living Arts, Leadership Mobile, Wilma Hall, Joe Jefferson Players, Alabama School of Math and Science, Barz, Big Brothers, Big Sister, YMCA, Devon Street, Junior Achievement, Drug Education Council, Mobile Public Library, Mobile Recreation Department, and all our parks, Mobile County Public School System, Bar Scouts Club, Bar Scouts, Girl Scouts, and the Mobile Swim Association. It's plenty of things for the children, but the city's not going to pick them up and carry them there. The parents got to do that.
Is everybody in?
Can you see the camera?
All right.
Thank you all for being here.
All right, Mayor City Clerk, thank you.
Adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved to second in the discussion?
No.
If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals, we request for a wave of the noise ordinance on June 29th on Marine Street, June 16th on West Drive, June 8th Alba Street, and June 29th, July, June 29th on Marine Street from 3:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m., July 4th and July 5th from 3:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m., and July the 17th from 3:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m.
So, second.
Proper motion and second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I just, yes.
Public hearings. Today is a public hearing to cost and for demolition and for securing of structures at 2308 Holland Street, 1230 Railroad Street, 1214 Satchel Street, 1310 Congress Street, 1316 or 1318 Congress Street, 1109 Lincoln Avenue, 402 Peace Lane, 1808 Delta Street, 968 Duval Street, 1603 or 1601 Duval Street, 2063 Kentwood Lane, 1622 Wardwood Drive, 1310 Windsor Avenue, 18 Town Choir Court. Today is also the public hearing, clear the structures, public nuisances, and ordering them demolished. 1901 Bishop Avenue, 1954 Bishop Avenue, 1900 Franklin Drive, 1906 Franklin Drive, Franklin Drive East.
Is anyone here, is anyone here that would like to speak during any of these public hearings? If not, the public hearings are closed.
Public hearing to consider approval of the certificate of public convenience and necessity to Norbert Zilanka doing business as airtail, transportation, shuttle, and taxi service to operate a taxi service.
Is anyone here that would like to speak during this particular public hearing? Not, the public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to consider approval of certificate of public convenience and necessity to Paul Dunning doing business as premier limo to operate a limousine service.
Is anyone here that would like to speak during this particular public hearing? If not, the public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Matt Bartoli.
Hey, thanks for letting me speak.
Good morning.
I'm here to address an issue that's been going on for about 15 years, and I'm here on behalf of the residents of Pinehurst Neighborhood.
Mr. Bartoli, totally good. Give us your name and your address.
My name is Matt Bartoli.
Yes, sir.
I'm at 767 Wesley Avenue in Mobile. And anyway, there's a, there's been a nightclub right in the middle of Pinehurst Neighborhood in between Wesley and Louisville Avenue. It's about, it's about 25 feet from their property line to my property line, and about, and it's the same way with about, with that club, about 15 other houses. I have a petition that's been signed by 150 houses in the neighborhood. There's 1,300 houses in the neighborhood. This club has been there for 15 years. It was originally opened, called The Edge, and then it reopened and done a name called The Boulevard, and now it's reopened again as a club called Laughing Lizard. They have a private liquor license that allows them to sell alcohol 24 hours a day. They serve out, their main business hours are from about 2:00 a.m. to about 7:00 a.m., and their busiest nights are Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night. They have a very loud sound system that plays where I can hear the bass while I'm, while I'm sleeping. It wakes me up, and my wife and my son as well. And, you know, I feel this situation's been ignored and that we've just been given nothing but excuses. Excuses like, "We really can't do anything about this until someone dies," like until someone's shot. A nightclub has never been shut down and nothing's been done until someone has been shot or killed. Other reasons like, this is, when I call police officers out to the scene, they say that this is above their pay grade. And when I talked to Mobile Police Department, they said it's not above their pay grade to write violations of noise ordinances. And the only ticket that's ever been written has been, has been a trespassing warning to me, claiming that I walked my dog through their parking lot one time. And you got to understand, this is a, there's a federal post office on this property. People walk their dogs and jog and cut through that parking lot all the time. So, they're retaliating against me. The owner sits out in his parking lot and watches me. So does the manager of the bar. You know, the petition has got so many different experiences people have had. I've got pictures of, they've retaliated against people in the past, too. I've got pictures of a house that's right across the street with bullet holes in the window. The guy that owns the house even talked to the news or anybody because he's scared. And nothing's ever been done. So, I'm just here to try to not hear an excuse, but to hear what, you know, is going to finally be done about this, because I feel like it is a big deal. I feel like I'm being treated like it's, like it's not a deal, and that my concern is a very small issue, and that it's a misallocation of resources to address this issue like it's a small issue. And, I mean, we just want something done. And the law, the law's clear. It says that a stereo cannot make noise in a residential district, any audible noise from 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. It doesn't say at least 50 decibels. It says any audible noise, plainly audible. And the definition of plainly audible means that it can be heard with the human ear. So, it definitely can be heard with the human ear, and it's repetitive, three a week, and it's been happening for about 15 years. So, there's a couple of people.
We say.
They're just two of the 150 people, and it's growing, and it's going to continue to grow, and we're not going to stop. We're not going to give up or be intimidated by anyone. And so, so we just want the city to act.
Please.
Not, stop giving reasons why you can't do something, and actually act, you know. And it's been advised that I have to take matters into my own hands, that I have to gather the evidence, that I have to do everything, and I don't feel like that's my job. I'm not an investigator. I'm not, and taking the law into my own hands is only called a trespass warning, and it's just, it's, it's, it's time, you know. It's time for this to stop.
I'd like to comment, and thank you, Matthew, for coming down. I know that we've talked numerous times since 2010, when I got back in office, for issues with the club. And I always end every statement that I make, either on your behalf to Public City, or to you, or to any resident that contacts me, that clubs and residents do not mix well. It doesn't work. Our zoning classification does allow the club, because the plaza is Zone B2. I know that the system is acutely aware, and I've been giving statistics about the number of calls, and I've urged you in the past to make sure that the neighbors call when they, when they hear noise or see a disturbance that is a public safety issue so that it is documented. We have the Public Safety Director here. He's been involved in every one of my correspondence, too, and I know if he has something to add as far, as far as the police are doing or looking into. And the owner does have rights. I mean, I, we remiss if I didn't tell you that, because they do sit in a properly zone, but they cannot cause a public disturbance. And that is when the council gets involved. But, we need the police to give us the recommendation, and that's something that is very thorough. It, because it has to hold up in court. And if Chief Barber, or former Chief Barber, but Public Safety Director, wants to comment, I would certainly appreciate his input into this.
Yeah, let me just say that we are very much aware, as the club was, Bullard then shut down and then reopened. And so, we are aware of your concerns. We have been looking at all the calls for service in that area. I do agree with Ms. Rich, is that the neighbors do need to call and not ignore any type of activity there, because we are documenting that. But, I will tell you that it is actively being looked at by the police.
Can I ask a question? Why is the police not able to write a sound check to them? Isn't that?
They are, they are empowered with being able to do that, but that's an operational issue, which I'm a legislator, and I know what the codes read, because this council votes on those kind of codes to keep neighborhoods safe and things working the best possible manner. I can't speak for an officer's comment to you. I made it known to Chief Barber and to Chief Batiste that that's what you heard, that's what you said, was said to you, and I don't know if anything transpired from that, but I made that clear that you had, and you were in that email chain that I received from me as well. Because that was surprising to me, too, that you were told that.
Yeah. I mean, if we're supposed to call, then we need to feel like, you know, the police are going to respond, you know, and give validity to our concerns, and they haven't been. I mean, it's.
I know. You could express that to me, Matthew, and that's why I put you in touch with our chief.
They haven't even written one ticket.
I don't know if you ever met with Chief Batiste, but I know that I had asked whether that would be possible, so that you could go directly to the top officer in our city to explain your concerns that you had about your experience with the club and the police response. That's, that's the best I could do, because I don't get into the operations.
The answer is basically, it's just going to continue how it has been. And I have to come back here again in six months with the same concerns.
Mr. Bartoli.
I mean.
Mr. Bartoli, first of all, unfortunately, your time has expired. What I'm hearing, the community, I can, I understand your frustration, and I've been here when you've come before. I know exactly what this club is. I'm familiar with this community. And what I'm hearing, our director saying, Councilwoman Rich, is that what the community is going to have to do is each and every time, call, worry the police, let them know what the issues are, each and every time, because they have to have the information needed to bring to us in order for us to be able to do something as detrimental as. in order for us to be able to do something as detrimental as revoke someone's business license when they are appropriately zoned for their business. And without all of that documentation, now if I'm off, Mr. Director, you tell me. Without all of that documentation, you know, the petition is good, but they need to have their paperwork in line, so that if we move to revoke their license and that business owner moves to sue us in court, we're able to withstand a legal challenge. And that has happened before. So I understand totally, and I know your councilwoman does, because she's talked to us about it on numerous occasions. Mr. Director.
Yeah, I can talk to Mr. Bartoli after the meeting. So a lot of the comments I have about this particular business, it's inappropriate to publicly comment on.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say that under the residential noise ordinance, the noise is measured at the source of the complaint, not where it's generated from. Otherwise, if I call the police complaining about noise, they're going to take the decibel meter to me and measure from there, not the place where it was generated from.
Right, but that's the misunderstanding here, is that it's fifty decibels. It's not. There's two parts to that law, and it says "or," so you can choose one part. One part says that it can't even be plainly audible.
No, that's automobile. That's the automobile. Residential ordinance is different from the automobile noise ordinance. In a residential noise ordinance, you can, at the ten o'clock, you can make noise, but it's limited. And for those who complain, the noise is going to be measured from the source of the complaint. Wherever the complainant is living, that's where the police, whoever called the police, that's where they come in.
That's actually not true.
Mr. Bartoli, I'm sorry. Your time, this is a great discussion, but your time has expired. If you could...
I would just suggest you all look at the law and look at the residential noise ordinance.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
And I recommend, if you do have time, to stick around with Director Barber. I think that, or any resident that's here, would take the time. It would be very wise if you did.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams.
Could our counsel attorney add something to this conversation? Are you prepared to do that, to know that... Yeah, okay. Because it was my understanding that what Mr. Richardson is saying is what the ordinance is right now. I'm not saying it doesn't need to be edited, but, you know, we're facing this all over as we grow as a city, especially downtown and the new development. So we do understand. I realize that we're... And I want everyone that's listening to understand that this is a legislative body. We do not tell the police what to do, ever, ever. Not this body. We do not tell the police what to do. The mayor does that. We enable those law enforcement officers through legislation to do what they have to do. So realize that there are some limitations to what this body can do. And that's just in defense of what Ms. Rich is saying. It's now time for action by the community as well. I must do so in fairness, was asked to. I emailed each one of the council members. I just, did everyone, well, I guess, did anyone not receive the email that I sent out from Mr. Crane? Okay? I also sent it to the clerk, and it will be entered into the minutes of this meeting. Unfortunately, I deleted the attachment. Madam Clerk, if you're in receipt of that. It essentially just simply says that there's another side to the story, that he was not able to be here today, and he hopes that he would be heard as well if there was ever a decision to be made. Realize that we're not here to take anybody's license away at this point. We're just gathering facts, and we'll continue to gather facts. And when it gets to a point, then we will, if asked by the administration to act, we will act.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Richardson.
The nightclub was so disturbing to some of the residents in Pinehurst that one of them called me and asked me, could she undertake the community action group to see how she could try and organize a community, a Pinehurst community action group around this nightclub? She came, and she went back, and she sent notices out. She invited the commander of the precinct. And everybody come, and it was a no-show. She had to let it go.
Well, the police did come, the commander came.
Oh, the police, these guys are my residents.
My office was, I was there.
But I'm saying, in terms of that being a big group from the community that had expressed some sort of concern, they didn't show up. Councilwoman Rich was there. So it has been an effort to get the community to organize around this issue, but the community showed no interest.
Further comments?
Just, Vice President, I just wanted to comment to piggyback behind my call, Mr. Williams. He stated that the city council cannot tell no policeman what to do, is no city employees. We cannot direct no city employee whatsoever, police, public works, firefighters, people that cut grass, et cetera. We cannot do it. And another comment I would like to make also is, I just recently had a resident to call me yesterday and contacted me about a Doyle Park situation that the police officer told him to give me a call, and what the situation had to deal with was administrative. And to me, it's not only the police department, it's other departments that's with the city. The employees just don't know, you know, I guess, exactly who's in charge or what actually it directed to. Many times, the council get blamed for it, and it's by really the city employees that are doing it. So I would like to encourage the administration to have some type of retreat with different, you know, departments and employees, let them know exactly, you know, who, you know, things are being answered to. And pretty much that the council is legislative. We make the laws. We do not enforce the laws. We cannot tell no employees what to do. We don't have no city equipment under our belt. Only thing we have is a pen and our city clerk. But again, it's not only the police department, but it's other departments within the city that the employees turn back around and say, "Hey, it's the council, it's the council, it's the council." Know the council legislate. We only make the laws, we cannot enforce the laws. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Small. But, Mr. Bartoli, the chief executive of the city is here. He heard all of your commentary, and I believe he wants to...
Yes, so just, this comment I make is, please stay around and speak to Director Barber after this. We hear you loud and clear.
All right.
All right. Madam City Clerk?
Bernadette Carter.
All right now.
I'm Bernadette Carter, address 5909 Dixie Lane, Mobile. We are members of Mobile Mentoring Explorer, and we're here today to present Councilman CJ Small with a plaque.
Wow.
We really appreciate his hard work and dedication to our group. We are chartered through Boy Scouts of America, and we really appreciate, and the plaque reads, "In appreciation to CJ..."
Wait, 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 hold on a second.
Pardon me?
One second, and I'm going to do it, "Price is Right." CJ Small, come on down. CJ, CJ, CJ.
And this is a small number of our group.
This is so nice.
The plaque reads, "In appreciation to CJ Small for your love's support, outstanding dedication, and contributions to Mobile Mentoring Explorer."
Oh, I appreciate it.
That's great.
I didn't know anything about this until I read the agenda, but thank y'all so much.
Oh, how nice.
Yeah.
Councilman Small is just the epitome of what we think is what a leader is. Our post advisor is Deputy Reginald Smith. He wasn't going to be here today, but we really thank him for all he did for our group.
All right.
I appreciate you all, because it's good to have someone to come down and recognize you and not come down here and raise hell at you.
That's great.
Thank y'all so much. Thank you.
Congratulations. That was so thoughtful.
Crystal Smith.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
Mr. Mayor. Mayor. My name is Crystal Smith. I come to you...
We need your address.
Is it a requirement?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm just making sure. I have an autistic daughter who, you know, I don't really...
Oh, we're not coming by.
844 Ashford Road North, Mobile, Alabama 36608. I did come to discuss my opposition with the record ordinance. Obviously, I attended the prequel meeting, so I do know that it has been shelved. However, since I did have to arrange for childcare, I still wanted to speak. As everyone knows, local truck operators provide a vital public service to the citizens of Mobile by responding to the scene of vehicular accidents and by aiding motorists in need. They also work closely with the Mobile Police Department to tow illegally parked or abandoned, and in some instances, crime scene vehicles. Mobile City Council has adopted an ordinance that governs the towing industry within its city limits. Up for your review and approval will be an amendment to this ordinance. Both the current standing ordinance and the proposed amendment that we've seen host regulations that are deemed to be unlawful, and once challenged in court, will surely be regarded as unenforceable. The supremacy law, in Article 6, Clause 2 of the U.S. Constitution, forms a basis for preemption, where a valid federal law supersedes state law. Congress has recognized that the widespread regulation of towing was inefficient, increased costs, and reduced competition. To that end, Congress expressed their desire to deregulate all motor carriers by prohibiting a state or local subdivision from enacting or enforcing laws relating to price, route, service, with respect to the transportation of property in Title 49 of the United States Code, thus ensuring that these aspects will reflect upon a competitive market force, thereby stimulating efficiency, innovation, variety, quality, and low prices. State and local authority may only encompass regulations as they pertain to safety. The United States Court of Appeals for the Eleventh Circuit, as well as the U.S. Supreme Court, has agreed that an ordinance, when in relation to or having a connection with a motor carrier's price, route, or service, is preempted by federal law, and therefore are unenforceable. Ladies and gentlemen, I respectfully urge the council to examine both the current ordinance and the one which will be proposed, to examine which of its regulations follow the scope of price, route, or service for exclusion, and rely on the measure of safety to pin one that is not only lawful, but with mutual benefit. I also make a request at this time on behalf of the Southern Alabama Towing and Recovery Association and all others who feel impact from such an ordinance, to have a voice at the table. Thank you.
I have a question. Is it your position that the city of Mobile should not attempt to regulate the towing industry? And even if it should, it has no legal power to do so? Is that your position?
My position is not that it should not regulate. My position is that law says that it can only regulate in situations where safety is a concern.
What would that be?
Well, as far as it can't regulate business hours, but yet it could regulate something that would be related to safety, like response time.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
You know, this ordinance that we're reviewing and we've been asked to table, because so many comments have come forward to this council and then sent to the Public Safety Director and our Chief of Police, and the people that organize the towers that are on a rotation list with the city of Mobile. And I don't know our legal counsel, Ms. Cochran would like to say anything in regards to this statement about that we don't have the right to regulate, because that's... I mean, I'm not a lawyer, so you're giving out cases, but it would be my premise that because the Mobile Police Department and their administration, they are actually drumming up the business by saying what is impeding our traffic, safety issues, again. These are safety issues that we're dealing with. And then having a rotation list that meets certain standards, I would think is the only way that our city possibly organize who they would call on out of your industry. And it's also something where a business volunteered to be part of. It's not anything that you're required in order to have your business license. This is strictly working with our police to organize moving vehicles that are impeding traffic, or, like you said, involved in something that involves the police. And they just want a standard to exist. And this council, as legislators, will work with the administration to produce the best standards we can, so that everyone knows what the playing field is, and also respects it, and, you know, gets involved if they choose.
If I may answer.
But we heard you loud and clear.
Your time expired. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
The only thing I'd say on the issue is this. We have, at the city of Mobile, an entire legal department headed up by Mr. Ricardo Woods. For the city council, we have Ms. Wonder Cochran, who's served as president of the municipal lawyers of the state of Alabama. The police department has their whole contingent of lawyers. I'm saying that to say, we probably have three to four to five hundred years' worth of legal experience working on this particular issue. And I don't think those of us are going to let us venture into an area that we don't have the ability to venture into. I'm willing to go as far as the legal representatives that we pay tell us to go, to make certain that the citizens of the city of Mobile are safe, aren't price gouged, and are treated with dignity and respect. And that's inclusive of making certain that all of the big operators and little operators have opportunities at the table. And so I'm listening to the lawyers that we pay. Mr. Woods, your legal department, Ms. Ramon, Ms. Wonder Ramon with the police department, Ms. Wonder Cochran. I'm not a lawyer. I am not a lawyer. I'm a legislator and a pastor. And so I don't want to take what somebody told me at the barber shop, sipping over a cup of coffee at the Waffle House. I don't want to take that. I want to take what my lawyers tell me. And then I know that they're not going to let us venture into a lane that we don't have the ability to venture into, from a federal standpoint. But we certainly appreciate you coming today. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk?
Reggie Hill. He is speaking regarding Resolution 31526. This is the Department of Justice Grant.
Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Members of the council, Mayor Stimson, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, good morning. Reggie Hill, 1007 Center Street. My rise today to speak on the consent resolution being introduced, 31526. And before I do so, I would just like to read something out of this Bible app that gives me a verse of the day each morning. And today ironically was Matthew the fifth chapter and that verse, and it reads, "Blessed are the makers and maintainants of peace, for they will be called the sons of God." And so as we look at this Resolution 31526, it says, "Authorized grant application to U.S. Department of Justice for the fiscal year 2019 Strategies for Policing Innovation Grant, $700,000, no local match." I wanted to compare those two because right now the police departments of the country are being looked at as stewards of peace. And that is a dire responsibility that they have to do, maintaining peace, safety, opportunities for prosperity, equity with the communities that they represent. And so I want to commend whoever is over the grant in the Public Safety Department for finding something that does not need a local match. That is very hard to do, especially for that amount of resources. But I want to ensure that before it is passed, that we are not investing in ideologies alone. We must be investing in measures that are going to be instrumental in creating safety in an innovative practice. I was able to look over some information today. It's a 50-page document for the grant, so I wasn't able to review all of it, and I'm not sure if anyone else has, but I'll ask these questions in hopes that we may be able to get a response. I want to know because it specified that there needed to be a partnering group within being able to receive this grant. And I feel that we should bring on partners who have solutions that have been able to be sufficient and have been proven to be sufficient. And I want to ask that first question. Has the Public Safety Department considered who that partnering group will be to be able to receive this grant?
Mr. Wood, would you like to offer anything?
That determination, to my knowledge, hasn't been made yet. So we could ask Director Barber, he can get you information.
Thank you. It goes on to speak on data, evidence-based, and innovative solutions. And then it specifies into two different areas, Purpose 1 and Purpose 2, and the idea is violent crime reduction. I want to encourage this council to ensure that we allow organizations that have been proactive in these measures. We've heard a lot about gun control even today. We even saw where our Public Safety Director was very influential in getting ordinances and really something even state-passed in regards to stolen guns. I personally believe that we should be looking at the measure of thieves before shooter, and then diluting those problems, and that we probably would be able to reduce those problems that we're seeing with the actual stolen guns being used to cause harm within the city. So I ask that we have a special concentration and emphasis on that first key purpose, and I would like to know, and I know that the Public Safety Director is not here, so I just want to present.
He just walked back in. As a fact, it might be, you might get a better dialogue if you connected with him, and that way he may be able to answer you directly. You're certainly welcome to continue, but those are questions pertinent to the Public Safety.
Mr. Chairman, now that he has arrived, may I ask that first question again, then just continue with those questions, and then we can see if we could possibly get together?
That'd be fun.
Okay. The first question was in specificity to the grant which requires a partnering group to be a part of the reception of this grant, and I wanted to know, who is the partnering group for the grant?
Would you have any of that information now, Mr. Public Safety?
Which grant are we referring to?
I'm at the consent resolution being introduced, 31526, authorized grant application from the Department of Public Safety. Yes, yes, sir. And it's the Strategies for Policing Innovation Grant.
You know, there's a couple of grants, one of them that we have up, the partner is the Mobile County Public School System.
Not the Stop School Violence Prevention. I'm referring to 31526, which is Strategies for Policing Innovation.
Apparently, that part, the partners have not signed on it, so I'll have to find out, but usually it's the DA's office and Department of Forensic side, but I'll find out the answer, what the partners are on that grant.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Director. The grant also calls that we be committed to sustaining practices that have been proven. And I just want to ensure before we push this through, it is great to have the...
That's your time, Mr. Hill.
Well, my time was actually interrupted. I'm on closing mark. I promise it won't take more than 15 seconds. I urge the council to please ensure that we are not responsible with the spending. It's great to see those resources in place, but we need to ensure that we're actually working towards public safety of our community. Thank you for that opportunity to speak.
Yes, sir.
Joseph Johnson regarding Resolution 37546. This is the revocation of the business license, TOC 1.
Good morning. My name is Joseph Johnson. I live at 4260 Grand Bay Warner Road in West Mobile. Just want to make a couple, point out a couple points about my license. I've been in this business for over 20 years, never had any violations. I have a family. I have a son in the Air Force, daughter, basketball player, cheerleader. I'm not a criminal, okay? I know that there were some comments made about what's going on at my business being completely illegal. All right. If adult entertainment was completely illegal, there would be no such thing as adult entertainment in America, in the United States. Nudity is illegal when you serve alcohol. Nudity is a constitutional right. If you're going to take my license, okay, then you have to take the license of movie theaters that are within a thousand feet of R1 zoning. One in particular that is not grandfathered in is Nexus Movie Theater in West Mobile. They're well within a thousand feet of R1 zoning, and they serve alcohol. Now, you have to show ID to get in there if you're a child. If you're under the age of 18, they won't let you in because it's adult entertainment. I was very careful when I picked this location, very careful. There's not a house, a church, a school within thousands of feet. This is in an industrial park, and these businesses in this area are open during the day. My place is open at night, so we're not even open at the same times. The reason why I moved to this location is because from 2013 to 2018, I was at another location just outside of city limits. I had some problems with the landlord, but I will tell you this. I paid hundreds of thousands of dollars in city taxes. So, what I'm trying to understand is, the city will take my money from the same exact type of business, but just in another location. The place that I used to have was 300 feet away from an apartment complex. It is in a county. It is in a county. And I know there's no county zoning laws. I understand that. But I had to pay the city. So even though there's no county zoning laws, I still had to pay the city a tax, and the city accepted that tax money for six years. And the reason they accepted it is because they heard nothing, no violations, no police reports, no prostitution, no drugs. There was nothing. And I've instored this business as far as keeping the trouble away. So before you make your decision to take my license, please keep all that in mind, okay? That's all.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Johnson?
Ordinance is held over 63012. Admend Chapter 63 of the Mobile City Code pertaining to rates for record service. Move to table.
I'm wondering if the Public Safety Director just wants to give a little background of why we're tabling.
Yes, per the request of the police that we tabled this particular item for now. What started off as a revisit of the record ordinance turned into some information that companies were acting outside of the current ordinance, which now has become a investigation for fraud or violation of the Alabama Consumer Protection Act, where there's accusations of gouging, excessive charging, or charging for services never rendered. And so those are criminal allegations. We are working with the District Attorney's Office at this point, and so we asked the table.
Now we have another attorney, the district attorney's involved in. So... Is not all in favor?
Ordinance 88019, ordinance deeming property at 3200 Moffett Road, not now needed for public or municipal purposes and authorizing the sale.
Motion to table.
Second?
Motion, second, any discussion?
Aye.
88021, ordinance deeming property at 809 Government Street and 105 and 107 Jefferson Street, not now needed for public or municipal purposes and authorizing the sale.
So move.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion?
Consent resolution's being introduced for the first time, 08523 through 03572.
Motion to suspend and rule the consideration of Resolution 0853523 through 03572.
Second?
If the public move to second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
08523 and 524, approving item-based bids and approving requisitions over 7,500 for the week of May 27. 21525, authorized contract within the real mowing for right-of-way mowing Dolphin Island Parkway. 31526, authorized grant application with the U.S. Department of Justice for Strategies for Policing Innovation Grant, no local match. 4527 through 4540 are fixing the cost for demolition structures and securing of structures at 2308 Holland Street, 1230 Railroad Street, 1214 Satchel Street, 1310 Congress Street, 1316 King Kong Street, 1109 Lincoln Avenue, 402 Peace Lane, 1808 Delta Street, 968 Duval Street, 1003 Duval Street, 2063 Kentwood Lane, 1622 Wardwood Drive, 1310 Windsor Avenue, 18 Town Cry Court. Forty, I'm sorry, 58541 and 58542 are adding J&amp;J Lawn Service and all of the above to LLC to the list of private contractors to abate properties declared public nuisances. 31543, accept Title III funding from South Alabama Regional Planning Commission for Parks and Recreation. 37544 and 545 are recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for Broad Street Cafe and Grill, and for issuance of a retail beer, retail table wine off-premise is only license for Jets 2 on Dolphin Island Parkway.
Can we stop there? Can we stop there?
Well, I was going to skip that next one and then go finish the other, then come back to that one.
Okay, all right.
Okay. 01547, shared cost agreement, authorized shared cost agreement with County for lighting improvements at the intersection of Nevis Road and Hillcrest Road. 08544, approved purchase orders for requisitions over 7,500 for the week of June 3. 40549, 550, 551, 552 are declaring structures at 1901 Bishop Avenue, 1954 Bishop Avenue, 1900 Franklin Drive East, and 1906 Franklin Drive East, public nuisances and ordering them demolished. 58553, assess cost for removal of weeds, weed-ling group 1589, and 03572 concur in the appointment of Shirley Sessions Infirmary Health Systems Special Care Facilities Finance and Authority.
So move.
Second.
Been properly moved and second, any discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
I'd like to point out 01547, which is authorizing a shared cost agreement with Mobile County for lighting improvements at the intersection of Nevis Road and Hillcrest Road. This was brought to my attention by a resident in the area who was very concerned about the street not having adequate lighting at Nevis Road and Hillcrest. It's a very well-traveled road now that it opens all the way out to Range Line Road into I-10. There's even a sign directing people to I-10. So it's a very, very popular corridor today, but without adequate lighting. I thank Commissioner Carl for working with my office, where he will designate the 12.5K for the project. The total project cost, according to Alabama Power, who will be installing the poles, is $25,000. Traffic Engineering, I thank them for getting with Alabama Power to get these estimates. My office will be moving discretionary funds for the 12.5K through my discretionary account over to the Electrical Department, who will then pay the Alabama Power bill. So again, I thank everyone. It was quite a concierme, and I am very grateful and looking forward to this happening in that area because of the amount of traffic and the lack of lighting at that intersection. So thank you.
I want to make a, just make it known that this is a banner day in our city as relates to the Africa Town and Happy Hills community. For years, for years, every community meeting that I've held, I probably have held 15 out there, the major topic of discussion has always been ridiculous condition that the Josephine Allen Homes, the former Josephine Allen Homes finds itself in, its decay, the eradication of community pride and home value out there in that community. They've just been pleading for some action to take place so that those homes could be torn down. And I saw people come from all over, Baltimore County principally, dump tires and other things on that property. Well, these four action items are declaring those structures nuisances, and I'm appreciative of Mr. Jamie Roberts, the mayor, and anyone else who's had a hand in making certain that this item moves forward. This council, maybe about six months ago, approved a new relationship between Mr. Roberts' office and the Housing Authority. There were some doubts and some concerns about whether or not we should move in that direction. I think this major project coming out of the gate really solidifies that this is going to be a great partnership, and there are other apartment homes across the city that they've already committed, Mr. Doffenbach and his division, to go and to investigate and then make the necessary recommendations. So this is a banner day for the residents in the Happy Hills community. It's a banner day for two, and it's a banner day for this city because no community, no community should have to live with that fucking filth in the middle of it. No community. No community should, no resident of public housing should have to live in that level of substandard housing. And I'm glad to see that we're finally making some progress in this regard. Any further...
Yes, Vice President Manzi, I'd like to piggyback behind you with the comments, the move of the tearing down of, you know, Happy Hill. You know, I made some comments months ago, just to understand how Happy Hill was still standing. You know, I made some comments, um, I was just to understand how Happy Hill was still standing up, and Roger, Roger got torn down, seemed like overnight. But I do like to thank the administration for moving forth with this, and also like to thank the administration for giving us heads up that in the future that other, um, housing development, especially Birdsville, is going to be, um, looked at and taken care of. Um, it has been my biggest concern, uh, since I've been on council, uh, twenty-twelve, um, that some kids from Maryville Elementary School, something might definitely happen to them, and those apartment homes that are open and, and blighted in the, uh, in Birdsville community. But I'm so happy to hear that, you know, you know, Birdsville is, is in the future of, um, looking to get taken care of. And again, I do thank the administration and the, um, mayor for making this great move, uh, not just for District Two or District Three, but for the city of Mobile. Thank you.
Any further comments?
No.
Not all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Item passes.
Madam City.
The, uh, resolution, consent resolution thirty-seven, five, four, six, revoke the business license of T O C one doing business at your class on Hallsman Road.
So move.
Second?
The property moved in second, any discussion?
Yes, um, the council attorney has.
Ma- uh, Madam Council Attorney?
If the, um, if the will of the council is to revoke the business license for the reasons that were stated in the draft resolution that I transmitted to you, you need to instruct me to, um, add that to the resolutions. Your findings are there, and if you like, I'll, I'll read it to you, it's, it's long, but you are all provided a copy.
Edit.
Yeah, you, you need to add it.
When making that motion, I would amend my motion to say that, that it would, uh, that the resolution submitted by, um, Ms. Wanda Cocke and our council attorney uh, be added to the resolution.
Second?
Been properly motioned in second, any discussion? Any, any further discussion from you, Madam City? And not, not all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Uh, item passes.
You gotta go back to the original motion.
We'll go back to the original motion. Is, is any discussion? Any further commentary from you, uh, Ms. Cocke? No, ma'am. If not, let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Uh, item passes as amended.
Okay. CIP resolutions being introduced for the first time, twenty-one, five, five, four, through twenty-one, five, five, nine.
Motion to suspend, remove the consideration of resolution, twenty-one, five, five, four, five, 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 six, and five, five, eight, twenty-one, five, five, seven, and five, five, nine, being held over for one week by council.
Second?
Probably motioned in second, any discussion? Uh, I'd like to mention item twenty-one, five, five, four. This is the beginning of our transformation for Lyons Park. We're slowly but surely going to all of the parks, uh, in District Two, making certain that they're upgraded, making certain that they are, um, friendly for both, uh, the able and disabled to, uh, enjoy Lyons Park. It's a unique park in that it's right kinda, kinda, middle of the district, and so, uh, this is the beginning of what will be a major overhaul there at Lyons Park. Any further discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Item passes. Item, the items, go on.
Resilience rules are part of it.
Yes, ma'am.
Now we're gonna read it.
Twenty, twenty, twenty-one, five, five, four, authorized contract with S.C. Stagner Contracting for Lyons Park Improvements. Thirteen, ten, five, five, authorized change order number one with Sawgrass Consulting for twenty-eighteen Miscellaneous Drainage Repairs Group A. Thirteen, five, 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 authorized change order number two to the contract with S.C. Stagner Contracting for Helen Wood Park Pavilion Reconstruction. Twenty-one, five, five, eight, authorized contract with Pope Testing Services for twenty-eighteen CIP Miscellaneous Group A Drainage Improvements.
So move.
Second? Probably moved in second, any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Not all, item passes.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, twenty-one, five, five, zero, through thirty-seven, five, six, seven.
The council rules, these rules run a level for one week.
Public carings. Call, call for carings. Forty-one, five, six, eight, call for public carrying to rezone property located at thirty-eight oh nine Moffett Road, west side of Moffett Road, seventy feet north of Stimson Lane, from B one to B three, scheduled July second. Forty-one, five, six, nine, call for public carrying to consider approval of taxi cab service to M'laden Belaji doing business as OK Taxi, scheduled for June nineteenth. Forty-five, seven, zero, call for public carrying to rezone property located at sixty-fifty and sixty-eighty-six White Bark Drive, north side of Gerby Road, one hundred and twenty-five feet east of Bristol Cone Drive. Uh, this is a private street extending to the east terminus of White Bark Drive from R two, R three, and B two to R two, scheduled July the ninth. Forty-one, five, seven, one, call for public carrying to rezone property located at seven-hundred Bishop's Lane, north, northeast corner of Bishop's Lane and Gulfwood Drive East from R one to B one, scheduled July ninth.
So move.
Second?
Moved in second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearings are called.
Announcements, council meeting next Tuesday has been moved to, uh, Wednesday, June the nineteenth, with the pre-meeting at ten o'clock and the regular meeting starting at eleven-thirty.
Uh, announcement, uh, Mr. Williams?
Thank you very much, yes, I just want, just want everyone aware that for the, um, next two weeks, I will answer my phone uh, on an emergency basis only. I will do some email during those two weeks, it is a, uh, it's a personal vacation. I will be traveling with my family. The front end of that vacation is gonna be occupied with time at the Paris Air Show, where I'll be working with the Mobile Chamber to attract businesses that they have tough target. We each are gonna be receiving a list of, of businesses and people to contact during our time there. I look, I look to a productive trip and the opportunity to expand our aerospace presence.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Williams, and safe travel. Bring all the businesses back, uh, from the airshow. I know that you and the contingent going from this council, Mr. Rich, I believe you, you attended.
Yes.
Go and bring them all back, bring them all back. Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes, I plan to go to the Paris Air Show. Uh, look forward to it being very productive. Like to announce to this, and I would like for the people in the Trinity Garden area to, uh, pay, pay close attention to this. We will be holding our community meeting in Trinity Gardens at the Dodge Community Center on Thursday, June twentieth, starting at six P.M. Our main focus is gonna be on jobs and workforce development. We're gonna have, um, representative from Austria Walmart Distribution. Uh, Mr. John Peeve from Public Works, uh, sent me a notice that, and they are having a serious issues with workers from various categories and wanting, um, to see could we help out by having to do fast. So, uh, those persons that might be interested in going to work for Public Works, uh, I would like for you to come. Uh, there's a shortage in public se- public safety employees, both police and fire. And I would have a representative from the fire department, uh, a recruiter that can, and talk about how you can access, uh, one of those jobs. And we're gonna discuss, uh, CIP projects, including the new ditch closures. We're gonna name the ditches so you know where they are, and we're gonna be, make sure that we're, um, there to, to hear any concerns that you have. So, uh, asking the citizens in the Trinity Garden, please, please, please meet me at the Dodge Community Center Thursday, June twentieth, at six P.M. Uh, we have a special group of women, the Lutheran Women Missionary, uh, coming to our city on the nineteenth. It, um, it's gonna be three thousand of them, coming from all over the nation. And on the nineteenth at six P.M. at the Bell House, they're gonna have the board of directors dinner. And they have asked me to be the keynote speaker at the dinner, and I am looking forward to that. Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Rich, uh, Mrs. Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Coming up, um, let's see, this Thursday, we have just gotten started with the Market in the Park at Lavereta Park. So just wanted to remind everyone that you can come out from three until six every Thursday through the end of July to get fresh fruits, specials, arts and crafts, and, um, certainly some flowers and shrubs. They're all locally grown, so come on out and, um, check out your vendors that you've come to love and enjoy buying from every year. Again, that is in Lavereta Park, it's on Old Shell Road, and the hours are from three until six through the end of July. This weekend, um, I will be celebrating with the Hillsdale community their sixth, sixth homecoming anniversary. Can you see my shirt? We have a special event Friday night at the Rec Center, then it will be in the park from noon until on Saturday evening. So, uh, if you'd like to, just come on out and enjoy the fun on Saturday. Uh, some of the different, um, churches in the area are participating. I think ribs will be sold at one of the churches, so come on out and enjoy, um, get to know your neighbors again in Hillsdale. A lot of people are coming back for this event, uh, who grew up in the Hillsdale community. So, so be a wonderful celebration for them, sixtieth homecoming anniversary. Coming up this Monday, the Distinguished Young Women begin arrive, arrive in Mobile. I will be out at Cooper Riverside Park to help welcome them. They will be in town for two weeks, of course, with preliminary, finals, uh, everything to be held still at the Civic Center. So, uh, just be aware that, uh, these young women from all around the country will be in Mobile. If you see them, please say hello, and I'm sure they will come down, uh, as they always do to introduce themselves, at least a couple of them, and tell us about what is in store for these young women who are here for the Distinguished Young Women program. And that is it, uh, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Gregory, always a lot going on in, in DuSavon and next year. Uh, and now what we hear from, thank, thank this castle.
Thank you very much. Um, as the mayor mentioned, the, um, Sprayground Express is quite a, um, attraction, and, uh, I, I love it that the kids are enjoying themselves. I, I will, um, ask parents and, and, and older kids that are out there with the younger ones to please eat your treats outside of the splash pad itself because of the wrappers that are being laid down and then blown into the splash ground area, or spray ground area, rather, and that it is something that we don't want to see going into the, into the system. So again, please keep that in mind. Um, I think, I understand that the administration, the Parks and Recreation Department is going to present some rules and that they'll be posted. So again, before that can actually transpire, please do not, um, allow your children to drop the wrappers. Uh, it's come to my office that it's quite a problem, but, um, continue to have a lot of good time up there. And this Sunday is Father's Day, and I wish everyone, um, a, a full, uh, Father's Day with their family and that it builds great memories for our residents. So, that's it.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Rich, for, for that, always a good, a lot of activity in District Seven, or District Six, rather. Uh, I wanna start off by, uh, reminding the residents of District Two that we too have a splash pad. It might not be Splash Pad Express yet, but we do have one. Uh, I get, get these folks asking where and when are we gonna get a splash pad? That, we, we've had one, it's at the James Seals Recreational Center, beautiful.
It's very nice.
And it's totally underutilized, totally underutilized. And so, uh, I announced earlier, uh, that all of the splash pads are open. Go and get splashed, uh, at the James Seals Community Center. It's there, it's safe, it's a beautiful environment, uh, go and avail yourself of that amenity. Uh, and we just, we are appreciative of having, um, that in our, in our community. And, uh, we're working on, but they are very expensive. I believe the one at, uh, Millavanna, what was the price, price on that?
Oh, God. And by the way, we are going to be putting out some picnic tables around it, which will be, that's where you should have your treats, okay? But they're not out there yet, but that's coming next. Um, I wanna say the budget was about six hundred thousand, if you can believe that.
My goodness, six hundred thousand dollars, and.
But, but it's huge.
It's huge.
Because the park is the second largest park in our, in our city.
Yes, ma'am.
And so it automatically attracts more than the community-level parks, but, yes, it was quite pricey.
Quite, quite pricey. So, uh, I just, I just wanna make that, that clear, that we have that amenity in our area, James Seals. And then you're always welcome, welcome out to Millavanna and, and, and go to the big one. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, we celebrated, uh, as a community out in Africa Town, uh, the news that the clotilda had been found. I had an opportunity to go and, uh, be a part of that ceremony, along with my colleague, uh, Councilwoman Gregory, and I believe Mr. Small. I was supposed to meet up with Councilman Richardson, and it just slipped my mind, I apologize for that, 'cause I know he's a historian and would've wanted to have been there, but it was a great celebration, and, uh, it's, it's, everything's kinda coming into an alignment for that community, and I'm glad, glad to see that so much is happening, because for so long, nothing happened, except those things that they didn't wanna see happen. Uh, I want to, uh, add to the list of those who we would observe a moment of silence for, I know we've passed the period, but Ms. Donna Austin, Ms. Donna Austin, the wife of Mr. Harry Austin. I know all, pretty much all of us are familiar with Harry Austin. He's, uh, involved in the community in a wide variety of ways, and he lost his wife, uh, due to cancer. And, uh, let's continue to keep him and all of those, uh, who are suffering with cancer, those who've beat it, like our colleague Gina Gregory, so proud of her, and, uh, it's, it's something that I open pray that we'll find cures for in the very near future. Uh, that concludes my announcements. Uh, any, anything else?
Minister Chair, um, just very quickly, um, since we talked about splash pad, I do want to remind everyone that there is also a smaller splash pad at McCants Chavers Park. So, um, if you live in the area, take advantage of it. Uh, it's great in the summertime to go cool off, and there are some nice picnic tables available. So, um, again, it's in McCants Chavers Park over in Mobile Terrace, and, uh, you know, take advantage of what's there because I, you know, the kids really do enjoy these. And just one other thing, I mentioned at our pre-conference meeting today, I was just, um, talking about how I had noticed one of our Public Works employees who's who helped weed eating, and in the past, we have really not been able to do this type of service on our median and roadways. We, we've had mowers come and do the medians, but they could never get to the, the sides of these medians where all the grass and the weeds tend to grow up, and it still looks trashy. So, when I saw this gentleman yesterday, uh, doing the weed eating, he'd been there all morning long. I had to stop and say something to him and take a picture, and I sent it to, uh, Mr. Peeve. So, for our employees out there who may not think that that's an important part of what they do, it is. And everybody notices, and it makes the city look so much better, so we really applaud them for what they are doing. It is a, a very hot, nasty, dirty, I mean, not nasty in the bad sense, but just dirty job. And very, very hot these, these days, out mowing the grass and using the weed eater, but it makes such a difference. And I just wanna thank them for all that they do, uh, for the city as well.
And, and I'd also like to ask our council attorney if you could prepare something for this council to consider next week, dealing with, uh, the recent news of the awarding of the thirty-three million dollar grant from the Federal Railroad Administration. Uh, we wanna make, we want to make certain that our governor, Honorable K. Ivey, is aware of our keen in, in, and commitment. of our keen interest and commitment. This is budget time and I would be in support of even financially supporting the initiative to make certain that we're not left out. Mississippi will be adequately addressed, Louisiana will be adequately addressed. We do not want Mobile to be on the bottom of the totem pole. Six months ago, we committed to a contract with Mark McDonnell in order for them to come up with a rendering or a layout of how a train station would work. And we need to make certain that we have a operational train running through the city of Mobile. We need that transportation amenity and I would hope that we could pass a resolution that could be disseminated to the governor and that the mayor's office, Mr. Anderson and Mr. Wilson, I'm sure you all are already on that, so that we can make certain that we're not on the bottom of the totem pole when it comes to that initiative.
Are any further announcements?
I would just like to announce that the first splash pad in the corporate city of City of Mobile in Trustant Canyon Park is wide open right now.
All right. I hear you, Good Shepherd. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Sir?
Probably motion seconded in discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting, Mr. Chair.